I hereby call this meeting to order. This is the October 2nd, 2018. Um, I'm sorry, Village of Oxford Council Chambers Planning Commission meeting. Regularly scheduled meeting for this month. It's now seven o'clock and I hereby call this meeting to order. As always, if you please stand and join me in paying respects to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Secretary. You'd be kind enough to call a rule. Johnson.
Here.
Deed.
Here.
Douglas.
Here.
Curtis.
Here.
Bama.
Here.
Thelma.
Yes.
Kyle.
Here.
We have a full house. We have a full house tonight. I'd like to thank all my fellow commissioners for taking the time out to attend this meeting this evening, and I'm very grateful for your participation. At this point now, I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda, which is before you.
I make a motion to approve the Village of Oxford Planning Commission meeting agenda Tuesday, October 2nd, 2018.
Mr. Secretary, I have a motion table to approve tonight's agenda and support for that. Wait a second. All those in favor approving tonight's agenda, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good, that motion carries. Our agenda for this evening is approved. I would now entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting, which is dated 18th of September, 2018. This was also a regular meeting and those minutes are before you.
Mr. Chairman, on page three, it should be zoning ordinance appeals, not planning commission, where it says, uh, Commissioner Primek. I noted that zoning ordinance was looking. It should be zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I see that.
I think about murder.
Oh, yeah. Well, it's hard to, uh, get any help anymore, isn't it?
I make a motion to approve the amended.
I'm sorry, there may be other.
Uh, just a typo correction, um, under new business, third paragraph down, Commissioner Stricker, so Douglas, he would like coordination, I would strike the word two, that's an extra word in there.
With the two changes to the regular meeting minutes of September 18th, 2018, I make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Mr. Secretary, I have a motion to approve, uh, minutes from our previous meeting with amendments. All those in favor, I also have a second on that. Mr. Secretary, all those in favor saying goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good, our minutes from our previous motion, our minutes, our minutes from our previous meeting are approved with changes. All right, moving on to item six. Mr. Secretary and or Mario, I'd like a point of order clarification on this. Uh, we have three items listed under correspondence for this evening's meeting, and I'm wondering, are we going to accept those items for filing, or are we going to discuss these items?
Uh, I can, I can talk about this a little bit. So the build-out analysis was included. It was something that you all talked about as a possible action item, planning commission. So, um, that's something that we were able to pick up that's already been completed. We just wanted to give it to you all. It can, that is a receivable file item. Uh, the DDA correspondence, uh, I would say that you should receive file that as well. It will be, um, there's a copy of that. It's, you, we referenced in item eight B, um, but that can also be received and filed and then C as well.
All right. Mr. Secretary, do you need a motion to, uh, receive and file these items?
Yes.
All right, someone would be kind enough to offer that?
I make a motion to receive and file, agenda item six.
All right, that includes items A, B, and C, I assume?
Yes.
Good, thank you very much. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All right. Mr. Secretary, I have a motion to accept this correspondence and file it accordingly. Also to maintain for our records, I would expect we might be referring to some of this stuff in the future. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. But our correspondence is accepted. Drew, thank you very much for digging that up. I appreciate that. I'll look forward to reading that. Uh, we do not have a public hearing scheduled for this evening, so we will not entertain a public hearing. Under item eight, we have two items of old business. Uh, item A, which is discussion regarding village council recommendation to review outdoor sales ordinance, and item B, which is a discussion regarding an annual action plan for the planning commission. I believe this is carry-on from our previous discussions. Mr. Secretary, if I'm not, yes? Good, thank you. All right, let's begin with item A. Drew, do you want to lead into this, or Mario, should I turn this over to you for clarification?
Uh, I can begin and I, and, uh, we can look to do, uh, fill in, uh, some additional background information. Uh, basically, I was contacted, uh, by Drew to make, be made aware that the council would like you to take a look at the outdoor open-air business, uh, ordinance language as it currently is written in the zoning ordinance. Um, as we know, there was previous action, well, I'm not sure. We were, we did, actually, we did discussion of previous planning commission meetings, the various, uh, attempts to enforce the existing standards. The administration, uh, did take that action, and subsequently, now that the council, um, had, would just like you to consider the language, um, how we have the president here and the administration, so they can, please correct me if I'm speaking out of turn with anything as regards to this. But basically, uh, what you have in your packet is a memo from myself that, uh, just begins as an introduction to this idea of looking at our, our existing ordinance language. Uh, in addition to that memo, you have a memo from Drew that very, uh, very detailed some of the summarization of the previous attempts to look at, uh, the ordinance language that we're talking, we've discussed. Um, so basically, uh, there have been attempts in the past to take a look at this language to try and make it reflect, um, the various policies that the, that the village could undertake. So with that in mind, I think a discussion about this item should be mainly focused about, uh, how any zoning ordinance amendment should be focused on. Number one, uh, if you feel that there are issues that need to be addressed based on their current language, if you feel there might be some methods, means in the existing language that needs to be, uh, that are somewhat lacking. If you do feel that the ordinance is lacking, um, then the first discussion would be mainly about, okay, where, well, there's two, two ways. Where would such a appropriate land, uh, use be located? And then also, uh, how would it be regulated? And I do have in my memo, you know, so to answer those two questions, where and how, um, I do have in my memo, uh, some beginning ideas of ways to clarify the existing language. Number one, being, uh, definitions of these uses. For example, the zoning ordinance currently has a definition for open-air businesses. However, in my opinion, the existing language, uh, where it comes into sudden, the supplemental section of the zoning ordinance that outlines the how we regulate it, is mainly focused on the display of items, that all the details of any language that. So I think one, and it, but it brings up, the definition brings up a key point, the idea that businesses that conduct, uh, operations out of doors, not primarily in a structure. Um, sometimes they are, that's their primary focus, uh, such as a nursery, and typically a nursery runs year-round. They might not display the same materials all the time, but they typically have an outdoor sales yard. And then there are other uses, other commercial business uses, which may want to display some items outside at a, at a certain time of year. Uh, that can, that can vary based on the season that they want to, uh, the type of items they're selling. So I, personally, I was trying to wrestle with that question, the idea of first, let's define exactly what we utilize, um, discuss it. And that's because, that leads into the how. Um, for a business that, who has primarily functioned year-round and having, having a, a component of its use being an outdoor yard, or so, such as a nursery, or as a, as a car dealership or something like that, you would regulate that a little bit differently than allowing for a business to occasionally display something outside. So therefore, I think that's important to make that distinction. Um, but before I get into the weeds of the, of the how we regulate, before we get into those kind of details, I think the broader question to begin the discussion is to step back and say, how do you feel about the current language and should it be addressed?
That's interesting you ask that question, Mario, because I was going to ask you the exact same question. I was wondering if from an, from an overarching standpoint, having studied this, I would imagine at some depth, that you have an opinion about the existing language and the current ordinance as it's written? Um, is it adequate? Is it not adequate? Do you have any idea about maybe what the original date of this language might stem from? And I would like to know also, sort of from an overarching, again, standpoint, what exactly the intention of this, of this ordinance intended to cover?
Well, um, as with any ordinance, any zoning ordinance, when we talk about, um, a use, usually it's a character of a use that governs how we regulate it. For example, single-family uses, they're very low intensity, they're primarily found throughout the village, so therefore we want to regulate those in one particular thing. And other uses, such as our commercial uses, which are more higher intensity, usually identified by their characteristics. They have, you know, commercial uses, they generate more traffic, they gen, they can generate more noise, uh, there are other, uh, safety factors to consider because you have a lot of people visiting that property, the, the general public visiting the site. That's why we regulate them differently. So then, since we're both, we're dealing generally with both commercial uses in this situation, you do thin it, define it, uh, down a little bit more in detail. So, a permanent business that just has an outdoor yard, we would regulate that based on, uh, a little bit more about its characteristics of like, how big is this yard? Do they have lighting? Is this lighting going to be shown and shining into adjacent residences? You know, those kind of site characteristics. Whereas separately, if some business just wants to display something outside temporarily for a grand opening, or they received a new product, then I could see that typically, and that's typically found in other communities, to be regulated with, and this reflects my, uh, my memo, with a temporary use of it. Something like Christmas tree sales, you know, generally that piece of property isn't occupied all the time for Christmas tree sales. It's during the holiday season. Pumpkins, pumpkins are obviously from now until, well, until Thanksgiving. Uh, and those type of things, they're seasonal items. Or once again, if someone receives a new model of something that they want to display promptly. Those type of uses, we want to just regulate from a safety standpoint to make sure they're not placed in a way that's going to block a driveway to, and, and not only that, but then you also get into the idea of, all right, is this type of outdoor display going to suddenly take over an entire property? If the primary principal use of the structure is in an enclosed building, then temporary display of outdoor sales could be done, and if you want to look at it from a business friendly standpoint, it also could be done administratively, whereas as long as they meet a certain criteria, then they get a permit for 30 days, or 60 days, or whatever. But if you notice, one of my details in my ordinance is, if we, if it's something that lasts for more than 180 days, then that's something that's going to occupy, that's going to change the principal use of the site. It's not something that's temporary, it's not something that's, you know, happens because they got a new item. It's there, it's part of the principal operation of the property. So therefore, they should be regulated differently. They should go through site plan approval, they should receive full site plan, all of the, all of the aspects of it should be regulated with regards to, uh, lot coverage and, and that sort of thing. So, so in the end, to go back to your original question, I do think those kind of distinctions would be appropriate to make because, and that I don't think that the current ordinance currently does, because I think the current ordinance is based on display. That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Mr. Secretary, I believe that you've done a good amount of investigation into this issue as it's been brought before us. Would you take just a moment and please, um, fill me in and perhaps illuminate on why, why exactly we're here discussing this now tonight? Um, I know that in the past, as we've talked about some of the momentum we have going forward, and the things that we would like to address, the issue of perhaps revisiting some of our ordinances and determining whether or not, um, they're updated, whether they're adequate, whether they're, um, appropriate, is something that we want to put on the agenda. But suddenly I find that this one has risen to the top very rapidly, apparently. Can you just very briefly fill me in on some of the history in terms of what's going on with this?
Yes. So, uh, as we mentioned before, we did bring this to you, uh, kind of as a, as a preemptive thing a little while ago, because it was an issue that we noticed. The enforcement of this ordinance in previous years was inconsistent. Uh, the reasons for that are, are what they are, I suppose, but, um, you know, our new administration ran into this issue, so, uh, the background of it is that there are businesses in this community that have had forms of outdoor display indoor sales for many, many years. Probably unaware that this ordinance existed, uh, they were often not all that noticeable, but nonetheless, not allowed. This goes back to as far back as zoning ordinance from May of 1991. Uh, we were able to find that ordinance then in various, the majority of zoning districts, this was not an allowable use. Uh, this ordinance specifically was looked at in the late 2000s for a potential amendment. Uh, planning commission recommended some ordinance language, a copy of that language is in your packet as well. Um, and I honestly, I couldn't tell you the context of why, but, uh, between the village council, the planning commission, and the downtown development authority, there seemed to be some disagreement on, um, the language of, of approving this. So for the C1 transition district specifically, uh, no language was ever, um, agreed upon for, um, allowing, um, any form of outdoor display or sales in C1 transition district. In the C2 district, it is allowed via special land use, and in the C1 core district, it is allowed through the village's code of ordinances, specifically within three feet of the front for businesses. So, with this being an ordinance, uh, it is our duty to enforce, uh, we did that, and so, um, so we cited some businesses and they paid their fine, and they also were unhappy with the enforcement of the ordinance, so they came to village council to voice their opinions. Village council then directed the administration to, um, bring this topic to you all, and Mario may be able to better talk about council sentiment on that, but that is essentially how we got to this point.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Do you have anything you'd like to add to that? Just a second, Jack.
We did.
Only because he pointed that you, and you can.
Yeah, I always point the fingers.
You can say that if you want.
We did put a moratorium on enforcement of the outdoor storage portion of the ordinance in the C1 transition district for, I think, 17 days. We have until the 50, not to make a decision, but to decide what direction we're going. Is the moratorium legal? Are we doing it the right way? And I, that's, I think we just really need to look at the C1 transition, forget the residential, forget the commercial for now. If you want, we can look at those later. But this is such a diverse group of businesses, that it's, to just look at this one, I think is the better way to go than to try to look at all the districts, because so many different uses. All right, we think we need to give council, this is what we're going to go, this is what we're going to do, should take this much time, we've got Mario doing this, Drew's not doing anything, we're going to put Adam do something, and go from there.
All right, thank you. I appreciate your comments. Jack, please.
Uh, you know, one thing I didn't do was look at the master plan. Um, number one, this was tabled for nine years, it's set aside. So by ordinance, it's not allowed because there isn't an ordinance allowed in your C1 transition. It's allowed in C1 core, if you keep it three foot off the building inside. So what probably happened is, like all the many towns around Michigan, the small villages, you go there and a lot of items are out on the front for sale, and they don't have a lot of room in their stores, so they bring it out and set it out for sale, and that's great, and the downtown, people walk by and look at it. I'm trying to think, and I don't want to put words in there, but the C1 transition, it may be that they were trying to insulate the residential from outside, storage, sales and display, I don't know, because it is allowed in C2, which is farther away with a special land use. So, what does our master plan clearly state as a guide? What did they want to do with the C1 transitional? Protect the residents from outside displaying sales? Or, by clearly putting this aside nine years ago, somebody told me that they wouldn't want that to happen in that district. So what we're looking at tonight is either A, approving, um, uh, an ordinance that was brought forth nine years ago, B, continuing the moratorium, we wrote up this ordinance that was written nine years ago, to ensure that it is what we're looking to get, or C, sticking with what you have. From a planning commission standpoint, I talk, it's not my feeling to tell you what's for sale outside. You know, if you sell tires and you have a tire rack out, that's great. You sell tires, I know you sell tires, you got a special on these tires. You sell lawnmowers, you got lawnmowers outside, that's it. If you sell art, you put art outside, and that's it. Where do you want to control that happening in this village? I, I don't know as if you want to have that control of it not happening, because the people I've talked to, it's noticed. It's like a key, look at, they do this, look at, they do that, let's stop and walk around, let's look at things. Is it the pleasure of the master plan and the village council to keep it out of C1 transition? That's easy. Add the ordinance, if you want to allow it a little bit, get them a special land use to go with the lease or, or the business of, instead of the property, and then you could do it that way and not have to permit it? I, I'm lost. I, you know, it's, what do you want in the village? Where is the village? You know, you have a DDA, then you have a C1 core, then you have the transition, then you have C2. Can't you make it all sort of a little more homogeneous, or are you sure that we would be protecting our residents from transition? I, and I'm wrestling with that, because I see many homes here that are changing into businesses, and that's not a bad thing. It generates tax revenue, it generates traffic, uh, employment, uh, all kinds of things. Other businesses start being used for it, but if you're trying to keep it in the core district, I get it, but you still may have an opportunity to do it and address it with a special land use. So mine is more of a question through, what do you want to do with this as far as the master plan goes and, uh, originally set up? Seeing it set aside nine years ago and in its length of detail, somebody did a hell of a lot of work working on it, but the main thing is, what's the reason it was tabled nine years ago? I wasn't there. Joe, please, if you want to step to the podium and introduce yourself and.
Yeah, Joe Mador, the village manager. And if you look at what was tabled many years ago, I think that a lot of that has been brought forth in the open-air business. I think there's a lot of similarities in that. So, that was redone in 2017 with the master, when the planning, uh, or the zoning ordinance was redone. So that kind of did merge and come through in the redo of these zoning ordinance, a lot of areas. One of the things I found with the open-air business, it was really restrictive when you have, whatever linear feet in front of you have, you can have that in square feet. So if you have a 30-foot wide building, you can have 15 square feet, so you can have five-by-three section up front. One of the businesses that tended, in my mind, demonstrates the need for this is Bird Street Equipment. They have lawnmowers set by sides, and then they put out front, wall it open, they display them, and they put them away at night. None of those would fit in the current ordinance of the, even if it was allowed, if you took the C2, or the open-air business thing and put it in, it would allow for them, they don't have anything that's only three foot by five foot. So they wouldn't even be able to put a single piece out there. So they're just looking for something like, can we put three or four pieces of equipment on our front lawn? It's off the road, it doesn't obstruct your vision, and then put them away at night. That's how they're been operating for many years, thinking like Drew said, that they were okay, that they had permission to. If you read on the, the C1 transition, and I was just going through this with some folks down, uh, a residential property down on, uh, 24 earlier this week, it talks about, and I don't have it in front, right in front of me to read it, but the mix of the business, the residential and the, um, a lot of mixed uses together, is kind of what the idea of the C1 transition was. They didn't say, we don't want this, we don't want that. It was kind of the little mix of everything meshed together, so, um, that's kind of, I think, what the C1 is meant for. And a good example, like I said, of what the persons are looking for is Bird Street, kinds of that. They're kind of off to the side, they aren't in the main core. The one ordinance that allows the city, the core, uh, district downtown, it isn't an outdoor display type thing, it's more of a sidewalk ordinance that allows them, 1967, that, so because they have sidewalks right in front of the businesses, there was something put in for them that says, okay, if you have these businesses right there, you can put something out, as long as you don't come too far out from your building, that was the main core, or the main issue. Farther out, they don't have those, so it's a little bit different. You know, they want to go display it on the front yard, or in your side yard, or something like that, so. I think we're just trying to find, and council's, uh, direction kind of was, let's try to find a way to be friendly to these businesses, but you do have to find a way that makes sense. I guess it's.
All right, thank you, Joe. Just a second. Commissioners, comments, questions? Mr. Snyder, if you'd like to, your voice, introduce yourself and state your address and.
Okay, welcome to the line, there's Chuck Snyder, live in, uh, up here, Edward Road, 2681, and a property owner in the community. So I think the, to understand, uh, part of the logic of the need for a change is, the village is probably in the worst shape it's been in in a number of years in the standpoint of this immersion environment. I did a little inventory, we currently have 14 buildings for sale, we have 15 buildings for lease, we're down to six retail businesses, and we have 12, they call specialty realtors, realtors, that would be like Bird Street Station, for example, or a jeweler, or a florist. Uh, myself, I have a lot of buildings, so try to be proactive. So I actually ran a full-page ad in some newspapers, the perfect place to locate your business this year, the greater Oxford area offers show buildings, nice write-up, talked about Chamber of Commerce, et cetera, et cetera. Mailed out to 61,000 people in the community in the newspaper, not one phone call. Not one. Looked at a building that I felt had some potential to be redeveloped, had an architect brought a beautiful plan for a beautiful building. Pretty nice. Took this around to appear in other businesses and other communities, nobody's interested in it. So, we've learned ourselves in a situation where our retailers are struggling now, and we haven't got to the street skate program yet. So, basically what transpired is, there's about, I'll call it five businesses, I'm the new one, four of my, uh, peers who are retail business. This ordinance has existed for a very long time, 1991, but it was never enforced, so we have Bird Street Station putting lawnmowers out, we have the Sunoco gas station putting antifreeze, wood, wood chips out, we have the Lakeland Salt putting salt out, I have my sculptures that I have out, but, uh, I guess I was the catalyst that raised the question of, is this allowed? And really what's, what the ordinance says right now is, a, outside sales is only allowed in the C2 district. To clarify where that is, we only have roughly three C2 districts. We have Marketplace Shopping Center, we have the Used Car Lot, and we have. We have Marketplace Shopping Center, we have the Used Car Lot, and we have the Dairy Queen or wherever it is on Birding Street. That's it. That's the only C2 we have. The Used Car Lot is totally different than anybody else because they are allowed to sell outside by right, they're no special use. Currently, so C2 has the right with special permission to have outside sales. Personally, I think that's a mistake. I don't think that we should allow any business where we could end up with issues that does something by right. The guy that's running the business might be fine, but he sells the business to somebody else, he's not fine, but we can't touch him because he's got special use. An example would be Tom Hardware, the greatest, nicest guy you'd ever want to meet, but the outside of his business left a little bit to be desired and they couldn't touch him. So my suggestion is, and we're remost to this, isolate this to C1 Transitional. C1 Transitional in and of itself is pretty broad zoning. It basically says you can be retail, medical, office, or residential. In my case, my business, which is even earned for me to believe, I've been open five months, I've had over 4,000 people come to my store, 4,000. We log them in every day, we know exactly how many people go through the door. They stop there for one reason and one reason alone, the stuff that I have outside. That's why, that's why they stop. If that stuff wasn't there, they'd be sailing right by. My stuff is not stuff that can be moved in and out every night. It weighs four, 500 pounds. They're sculptures that we made. So we're appealing to sort of the artistic side of people inside the store. There are smaller items which are fine inside. So I have a store that's been here five months, how many people have been to my store? Who else?
Neither of us.
Two people. One person on the council, I don't think anybody on the DDA. So we can't rely on the local people to support us. If you look at the list of people who come to my business, we log that in too, they're from all over. We've got people from Farnesville, Texas, Davison, Addison Township, Davisburg, Minneboro, Upire, Rochester Hills, Leonard, Waterford, St. Clair Shores, Pontiac. These people, we say, well, you're from Pontiac? Well, I drive by here all the time. And I stopped here because I saw your stuff. So for my business, I'm out of business if I can't display my stuff outside. So basically what I suggested was that we allow outside sales in the transitional district, but the person who is the applicant has to come before the planning commission and make their presentation as to what their business is going to be, what they're going to be displaying, where they're going to be displaying it, et cetera. And that person gets a six-month permit, not special use. At the end of six months, they either are allowed an extension on that permit for another six months, or they're done. If their business has not performed to the standards of the village, they didn't keep it up nice or whatever, they're done. Their six months, they're done, that's it. And there is no allowing some of whom might buy that business in the future to assume that permit. They have to come and make their own presentation. There's a downside to that is what I call subjectivity, is that it's subject to the planning commission, but the reality is you've got to understand who's doing what and what they're selling, how they're selling it, et cetera. So I don't think, I mean, I don't agree with special use at all because I think that is just fraught with problems down the road if you don't know who the person is. So why would, why would we need to give a special use? We give them a permit. So that's basically it. We have about five businesses that rely on, I mean Lakeland Salt, they cook their salt out every day, and Birding puts his stuff out, and the gas station puts his out, and Oxford Farm and Garden, they put their stuff out. You know, Farm and Garden isn't going to load all this stuff in every night. I mean, they got pallets of stuff. I'm not taking mine in every night. And I, I, believe it or not, I have what I call midnight shoppers. So I have my stuff out there, they're allowed to go through there, and we're only open three days, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday morning, I got a car sitting in the driveway. That guy, the person came over, they saw something they liked, and they're ready to come in and buy in. We've sold over 500 items in five months. Now, I'd like to have 4,000 people or something, but that's not realistic. They're coming, we're not a store, we're an attraction. So if you have to answer any questions.
Mr. Snyder, thank you very much for your comment. I really appreciate it.
This is a very complex issue, and it's very clear to me that this has been a sword that has not healed and has festered for quite some time. So I'm somewhat reluctant to rush to a conclusion, but I would like to, I'm intrigued, I have to admit that I'm intrigued by Mr. Snyder's suggestion. And so I'm curious about, you know, because I always want to do things within the law and I work very hard not to overstep the bounds of what we can do as an organization and what we can recommend as an organization. So what I would like to know right now, if possible, is going forward, what are some of the options that we can consider? For instance, I think Jack made a very interesting suggestion, I don't know if you heard it because he kind of dropped this little golden nugget in the middle of a long string of comments, but I was intrigued by it because I know that it's not something I've heard a lot about. Mr. Snyder, they referenced to it, and he said that allowing or assigning a special use permit to a piece of property can indeed be very dangerous because it has a tendency to exist in perpetuity, if I'm not mistaken. And so when you've got a change in property owner, they end up with a special land use permit that we then can't control because essentially your grandfather didn't, if I'm correct. So one of the things I would like to know is, is there an opportunity to assign a special land use permit to something other than property? Can it be done to a person? Can it be done to a business? Can it be done to some legal entity that then does not exist in perpetuity, but has a sunset on it when either the person is no longer involved with that business or the business is no longer being conducted in that site, the special land use permit goes away? Or Mr. Snyder's suggestion, which I thought was very interesting, but again, I don't have any concept of law or legality with this, but creating a concept of some sort of renewable license or a permit, if you will, that does not have an infinite extension, but extends for a period of time which is renewed, could possibly become a source of revenue perhaps. I think, you know, there's an idea that, you know, it doesn't have to be outrageous, but a small fee to renew a permit annually if that business is still going. I like the idea of that because it has the opportunity to be discarded once that business is no longer functioning and is not being applied for, it hasn't, it hasn't had a sunset yet. So I'd like to know something about that, and perhaps you could sort of illuminate, if you're familiar with, how some things like that would work.
So basically, the short answer is yes. Special land use permits.
I like one word answer.
Trying to contrast it with my previous answer. Basically, special use permits are granted after going through the approval process online in your ordinance. And when you grant the special use permit, you can impose conditions. So when any of those conditions go away, then the special land use permit goes away. Now, the issue that generally people get under the impression that it runs with a land is because a lot of times some communities will just grant a special land use permit without any conditions, and so then it's been challenged and people think, you've granted a special use permit, there is no conditions, so therefore it's going to just keep on going. And so then the only way that that use can go away is if they eventually violate a legal non-conformity or some other use, use regulation of the ordinance or some other licensing ordinance. So, so once again, the short answer is yes. Especially, you would just have to, rather than, rather than go and go on, you know, policy issues and stating special use permits, we have to remember to tie it in some way with user, I would recommend looking at some type of regulation in the ordinance that says you must grant a special use approval, one condition of approval must be, you know, X, whatever that condition that either runs with a prop business owner or runs with a timeframe or some such thing. But the special use permit is your ability to say, if any of these conditions changes, the use approval goes away. Other, other ways that some communities do this is actually with a business, some type of business license, but that isn't done in the zoning ordinance, that's done in the general law ordinance. It's something that's, that's the purview of a council. If the council wanted you to address it that way, you could, and if they wanted you to, you could draft the language and then they would review it, hold the public hearing, and approve it. But it would be, and generally, you know, you'd have to talk to the attorney, it's my experience that some communities do license one particular business, other attorneys are of the opinion that if you license one business, you have to license a whole. So, but I've worked in other communities in which, for example, the only thing they licensed were pawn shops. So that's based on your legal consultation. So that would be the other option because then, then they could put a sunset clause, if you will, or say it only expires after six months, that you have to, business renewal, the license renewals every six months, but once again, that's a general law ordinance. The thing that might go in the middle would be a temporary use permit. A temporary use permit could also be a way that you could grant that and say it expires after six months, but usually you do that when, you know, something's temporary, sure. Technically, you should have, or most communities do have, something that says only one permit for X number of days will be allowed in a calendar year, so therefore it is temporary, it's not there perpetually. In theory, it wouldn't be my advisement, but in theory, you could write a temporary use permit regulation, say you only, you can only grant temporary use approval for six months, and then that just requires a person every six months to come back to you every time and get that permit again because you don't have in your language something that says you get one six years, six month permit, and you can only have one in a 12 month period. So it'd be kind of a way of putting in a loophole, but then that person has to come every six months to do it. So that's a one option, but though, but the temporary use option and the special use option are your purview. If you wanted to go with some type of business license, that's general law and that would be more councils' opportunity to do that. Commissioners?
Oh, I have so many opinions, you want to start with somebody else?
Smoke?
I don't care.
Okay.
I, my big concern is scattered amongst all these businesses or all these residences. And I think we need to look at, if we're going to allow Oxford Lake Dental, are we going to let them have outdoor storage? Are we going to have outdoor sales? Where are we going to let them have it? So the next door neighbor or the rear yard neighbor isn't put off by that? Is it going to be allowed in the front yard, side yard, outdoor step backs, right to the property line? Does it have to be covered? Does it have to be, I'm just in the guts, then if we can do it by permit, we can do it by permit. I don't think that's the part that's going to be hard. I think it's going to be the regulations that are going to be hard.
The stipulations and the...
Right.
The requirements that you've set forth on there too. Because that, I agree with you, that is going to be the difficult part. On a case-by-case basis, if this were to be evaluated, you'd have to look at each one and try to make a set of circumstances that would, just a second, that would, that would not make an attachment upon the neighbors, which I imagine could be a bit of a hardship for them.
I think whatever we do has to apply to all of them. Because all of these businesses have heavy hearts.
Jack?
Yeah, I'm wrestling with, it must be under a roof. And taking this instance into call here, sure, you can grant outside sales. That's not a problem because they bring it in. But when you have to store your larger items outside, that's a problem. So how do you grant a permit to sell something outside? Now you're granting permit to sell outside and store outside or display because it's not brought in every night. I'm wrestling with it from the fact that you have it up against residences and I still go back to, let me first say this, I'm in favor of this. I, I think, I remember back 40 years ago, an older lady, Helen Callahan, telling me to buy a house on N24 because sooner or later it's going to be commercial property and you're going to be rich. I remember that. You're at this point now where it's so hard to get people to come here to open a business and sustain a business, you know, we're just, we're losing all of that. What is it going to be? Residential again on N24? You know, I don't know. Businesses are not flocking to come here. You don't need Chuck's surveys, you see that in any magazine, television, YouTube. They're, they're fighting for that niche market. Funky Monkey is that niche market. He's making it go, but that's already okay in that period in the C1 core, but if it was down the street, he couldn't put his monkey outside or his joke sign outside, and then it would take away from the niche marketing because no one would know it's a toy store. So, you know, I think it should be done on a special land use tied to the lease or the tenant, the landowner, but not the land. That's what I feel.
Agreed. I would venture to say, Chuck, I would have to tell you that I was, I was moved five years, I thought you did a very good job of making that presentation, just like. And I would venture to say that, because I agree with Jack, I, I think it's a very cool store. And that's my own personal opinion, I don't speak for the commission there. I would venture to say that every one of those 4,000 people that came by and visited your store went away thinking Oxford was a much cooler place than what they thought.
I get, I get.
And I appreciate that, I appreciate that, I don't doubt it.
Joe, please, if you'll come up to the podium. Please introduce yourself again for me.
Joe Mador from the village offices. I just wanted to put it in perspective, when C1 core is all a lord is, right, like the pink areas, things that are already permitted by right. I mean, and you have churches, schools, colleges, business schools, public owned buildings, private indoor recreation facilities, retail restaurants, bars, bed and breakfasts, hotels, restaurant theaters, so you get the idea, it's not a real restrictive area when you come to, there's commercial stuff, arcades, outdoor dining at private properties, but it was an eating establishment. So I just wanted to make sure, you're kind of wondering how is this and how restrictive should it be or maybe not be, and those things are already all permitted by right without any special land use. So there's a multitude of other things in there that are special use, but there's many things that are already permitted by right in the district, professional offices, medical offices, funeral homes, banks. So just keep that in mind when you're thinking about, you know, is this a right spot for this kind of an activity? There's a lot of activities already permitted by right in the area. All right, I agree with you with that.
And with Chuck, what do you think?
Drew, please. As you talked about the special land use permit, I, I just wanted to, I was looking at the language for special use signs because I think that's a decent parallel for where this conversation seems to be going. And within the language for that, there are specific criteria that you all are expected to use when you're evaluating those, those, you know, applications for design approval. And... if the direction is that you want to look at this as a special land use tied directly to businesses, which is something that can be done, establishing a set of criteria, here there are seven, things like, the sign should not be constructed or located as to be a visual nuisance to nearby residential users, things like that, that are coming up with those criteria that you all would think would apply, I think would accomplish the goal, if that is the direction that you all want to go. But I just wanted to remind you that that is an existing process.
Of course. Good work. Thank you for that. Commissioners? Commissioner Leslie? Comments?
No comments right now.
Ms. Rose?
Okay. All right, so, we have a discussion in front of us, is there, is there action to be taken tonight? Any at all? Whether it be resolution of this issue, or a tabling, or a continuance on the moratorium? I mean, I, I, I'm not really comfortable just tabling this and ignoring it, because that's been, seemed to be the issue that's occurred for a long time. I believe this is something that needs to be resolved, but it is a very big issue, Mario, and this is, I don't believe this is something that we can resolve right here and now. Now, we may be able to take a step towards making it better, or we can at least just continue to think about this, and we can see where this goes, but I would like to have some progress on this. I mean, I think that things are, are up in the air right now, and I don't know how long we can keep that plate spinning up there on top of that pole.
Well, if I may, I do think it goes back to my, one of the original questions I posed is, what is your, what is the commission's opinion on the current language? They feel the current language is appropriate, then there would be no action to be taken. They do feel like the current language should be revised to reflect all the various issues that pointed out, then we could discuss it further. And then, it's up to you as to how, the pace we go, and what we have, you know, the, the language that I put in front of you was just my, based on my initial review of the language, it wasn't based on your direction. I'm here to take your direction. So, once again, if there's something about, if there's something you want to address, then, then, if you do want to look at different language, as you said, and you go back to those two questions, where and how? As Mo mentioned, the how and the details, that's where you get the weeds, but it is, it will get into the specifics of making sure, basically, that, that anything that changes is compatible with, with residents on the journey, and allows businesses to accomplish.
So, Mario, is it your impression, I'm sorry to interrupt you, is it your impression that this ordinance was written this way to restrict outdoor, outdoor and C1 transition? It was written this way to protect the fact that this zone is a mix of both business and potentially residential? Because I guess I have to wonder, what, what exactly, because Jack asked this, I think in a certain way, but I don't want to ask it rhetorically, I want to know specifically, was this ordinance written this way to protect the potential for residents in this particular zoning district?
The lack of an ordinance, the lack of allowing it, there's no ordinance allowing outside sales in C1 transition. So, you have to have an ordinance in order to approve the sales, not in, in C1 transition. We have to adopt, you would have to adopt an ordinance to allow it.
So, Jack, are you saying there currently is no ordinance?
There is no allowing outdoor sales by virtue of no ordinance allowing it.
Gary?
Yes, ma'am.
The C2 district allows whatever, so C2.
Yeah, C2.
They purposely did not put it into the C1 transition to protect the residents. If you look at the uses, there's not a lot of uses that are going to have outdoor storage. You don't put a car dealer in the C1 transition. You put banks, you put debtors office, attorneys office, because they don't have outdoor storage. And then the districts were all kind of realigned in the new ordinance, so there are a couple of retails still in there. You know, the ones at the north end, Oxford, the Co-op, that was, was a P2, or the bank was industrial, or...
It was industrial.
Pardon me?
It was industrial.
Yeah. So, they had different zonings, so then they weren't industrial anymore, they still had their stuff. Okay, that was...
Being industrial is not everybody.
Right. Oh, trust me, I see it every day. So, yes, in a way, they purposely left storage out to protect the, the residents that are still in there. But then they went back to look at it, and then, then it never went anywhere. So, there's your answer.
Chuck, please, state your name and your address, please, for the record.
Chuck Snyder, 2681 Haverhill Road, Michigan. So, there's just a couple of things I'd like to acknowledge. One is, I think that everyone acknowledged that having outdoor display is a good thing, because they allowed it in the core downtown. If they didn't think it was good, then they wouldn't allow that. The second thing is that I think each business is totally different. So, what I need, and what Burdick needs, and what the salt guy needs, are totally different. So, I think trying to structure an ordinance that has provisions, I, I think it's impossible to get one that is going to be, it'll be three good points for that business, and then four bad points. Joe mentioned this, one square foot of space for every two square feet of building. I got a half acre property, and I'm limited to whatever the front footage of my building is, so I got half an acre. The other thing is that we've got these five businesses, I don't think I've had any complaints from anybody that have come to the village and said, hey, this guy's bad. I've had one lady who her fellow residents have discredited, so that's all I got. This is, this is what I get. It was a lot of fun, good stuff, good prices, will be a regular, looked unusual pieces, amazing items, want something cool right away. It was a beautiful experience, I love seeing one of a kind items, so thrilled to have a store like this in Oxford, cool stuff. Thank you for opening Oxford, we needed this, that's what I get.
Just as I said, thank you, Mr. Snyder.
I got, I got, just give you one little story, particularly, this lady lives in the apartments right next to us. So, I hadn't seen her for a while, so she gave me the story, said, Ellen, I haven't seen you before, where have you been? She said, I've been on the hospital, I was in intensive care. I said, well, how long have you been out? Oh, I just got out, I just, I just got out today. I wanted to show my friends your store, so they picked me up at the hospital and I gave them here, I brought to your store. The woman was just coming from intensive care, but she was so enthusiastic about the store, she wanted us to have her friends see it. So, that's the kind of enthusiasm that we get, so, I think in my mind, the job is a little easier on the businesses that are currently in operation, because unless there's been complaints about them, the job is saying, hey, these are maybe okay, they, they've been in business for, you know, Burdick Street Station, nine years, five months remaining, whatever. So, unless there's been any complaints, there really shouldn't be a hesitancy to give these people, in my view, six month permit, renewable administratively. They don't come back to the planning commission, they go to the village office to get their permit renewed. The village office, through the ordinance officer, should know when there's been complaints on that business. That should be the process.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Ask a question of, Drew Benson, a question for you. I want to understand what I thought you were saying about the sign, the criteria relating to the sign, and, were you saying, well, in dealing with the same type of matter with signage, the way that, that ordinance is currently written allows for adoption based on sub-criteria, which are to be considered at the time that the sign permit is brought forward?
Yes.
And were you saying, perhaps, in terms of some kind of temporary or special land use application, another way forward might be to develop criteria that would be considered at the time those individual case-by-case permits came to the commission?
Yes, so it would be something that applicants could look at and say, these are the criteria that we're being evaluated against, it would give you all something to reference against, while still leaving, I don't like to use the word subjectivity, but a certain degree of autonomy within your decision-making, saying, within these somewhat broad criteria, does the, for signs would be, does this sign, or if it worked for an outdoor display or storage space, does this work within this space? Do I see something that the sign could endanger the public health, safety, or welfare by obscuring the vision of drivers? You know, things like that. I would recommend, like, if I had thought about it, I would put it in packets, just for a reference point, the language that's used in there in the zoning ordinance, it's on page 102, section 7.4.10, just for, just to look at. But yes, that, you're, you are correct in what I was getting at.
So, to take that as the next logical conclusion, if criteria were developed that were flexible enough to allow for the commission as a body to review and determine whether it's in the best interest of neighbors, if they were resident or not, that would be one way to address that question.
They would also be subject to a public hearing, giving all of the residents, the property owners within 300 feet the opportunity to speak on that. So, yes.
Thank you.
I've lost a paragraph, square feet, a lot of square feet, I can't find it now. I did have one for two, but what paragraph is that?
It's in the book too.
Yeah.
Page 54 in your book, you have your book.
No, but, the ordinance, Leslie, you read it. Mario, you read it. One, one foot for every two of frontage.
Yep.
Which one paragraph?
Frontage of the building.
What paragraph is that?
C. Oh, in, in your current language, it's paragraph C under 4.1.2.3.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to see a special use permit that would have conditions on what is out there, and, and how much room they can take up.
All right.
I'm in favor of having some outdoor storage, but they have to meet certain criteria in order to have it out there.
All right, I agree with that, first thing to you. Jack?
Yes. See, if, if we approved this ordinance from 2009, like Mario stated, the outdoor display shall not exceed one square foot of ground surface for each two square foot of frontage of the building. That wouldn't comply, Burdick Street wouldn't comply, Lakeland Salt wouldn't comply, nobody would comply.
That's too restrictive, I believe.
So, you know, to throw this ordinance out there is, I mean, it's still telling you you don't want it. So, how, do you, right now, set this aside, hold the, recommend that the moratorium be held until we can get some of these small noted paragraph and verbiage changed, or do you just want to?
I don't think, anybody suggesting that 2009 stuff go ahead. I think it's all going to be rewritten. What I would like to take back to council is, hey, this is what the planning commission wants to do, they want to go with a special use permit that's then good for six months or a year, and then is renewable, or do they want to just not allow it, or they want to just let it be a free trial? So that I can get that, I don't know, have we heard from Bob Davis at all?
No, not for me.
So, we still have to hear from Bob Davis at the next council meeting Tuesday, we've got to include the DVA, get them going with where we want to go, get their input, because any, anything in here, almost anything in here is in the DVA district. So, we want to get their input, and I don't know when to meet him, Monday?
About two weeks, it's just, I said, see if he could put this ordinance through.
No, no, that, that...
But, the village council's looking for a recommendation.
I understand, and I, I, just a second, Rose. I, I believe, I'll speak for the president here, although she's here, I believe that the, the council will accept notification from the commission that we are at least addressing this, and we intend to address it straight away. We may not arrive at a solution tonight, but we are addressing it straight away. We have both maybe perhaps a short-term and a long-term solution in mind, you know, because we do have, I, I believe we have a pressing issue right now, and that's why they sent this to us, is because there's an issue before us that they would like to have some resolution.
And no one expects a decision tonight.
I, I would hope not, yeah, I would hope not, because like I said earlier, this is a very complex issue, and I don't think that we can come up with a solution that is immediate. However, we have two, and, and, put me in if there's other options, but we have two options. Apparently, the council issued moratorium on any changes from status quo. I don't believe, I think that, I hope that includes no more citations will be issued, but no more, no changes will be allowed from what we are right now. But I expect that that's probably a short-term solution, but there's, but we should take some action as soon as possible to try to alleviate that, because I'm sure, speaking for Mr. Snyder, my expectation is he'd probably like to have a little bit of guidance in terms of a fairly quick resolution in regards to his particular problem. Is he going to live under a moratorium, or are we going to provide him with a solution that, at least, or at least some confidence knowing that we're going to address this and we think we are going to come up with a solution that will be in the best interest of all parties involved? But we do have, we do have a pressing issue right now, because at least we've got to send something to the council saying, we're looking at this, and here's kind of a lean towards our strategy, or maybe you don't tip your hand yet, but we are looking at this and we expect to have a resolution short. Madam President, please. Can you state your name and your address, please?
Sorry to interrupt. I think council, and Mo can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think council expects a decision or some kind of a recommendation in a shorter timeframe than a longer timeframe. And I also think that council, the consensus was that they didn't want this to be a special land use unless it could be very restrictive, like Chuck recommended. I think everybody was on board with Chuck's recommendation about having a permit, so that it doesn't go with the business, doesn't go with the landowner, doesn't go with the person operating the business, that it expires when beginning one of those places, and the next person has to come and apply for that permit, unless you can do it under a special land use and have those. And then other thing I want to say was, you need to look at maintenance too. In other words, you don't want to have, and one of the things that Drew said, in other words, you don't want to have, and for lack of another business that I can point to, Burdick Street Landscaping put their stuff out there, bring it in at night, but then never mow the grass around the display, or that, or in Chuck's case, having it sit out there 24/7, 365, and having no snow ever cleared out, having trash and papers blowing around, and so I think that maintenance needs to be part of a criteria that you guys will be looking at.
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. Rose, did you have something?
Yeah.
You're looking at me very expectantly. You're looking at me very expectantly.
Because this is such a sensitive matter, and because we're bouncing back and forth to DDA, to council, and the planning commission, wouldn't it be viable for us to have a joint meeting of all three bodies to haggle this out and find out what everybody wants? Because we're gonna make a recommendation to council, and the council's gonna say yea or nay or whatever, and then it's gonna come back to us again, and then the DDA may have an opinion on where to go with it. And I just think that having a joint meeting of all three bodies would help enclose whatever needs to be done.
Thank you very much. Madam President, does the DDA have any stay here?
Just started squat.
I'm listening to Rose's suggestion that we have a joint meeting with all three bodies, and I just.
I suggested that right from the get-go, that that take place, because the timeframe that the council is drafting is, is something within the next 60 to 90 days or less, I'll say. That's my interpretation of the conversation that took place. But in order to do that, everybody has to be on this page, and like Rose says, you take it here, you guys are not to make the decision, or everybody invites the DDA who's gonna discuss that in two weeks, and so they can make some recommendations, but it can come back, comes to you, you've got half of the ideas. Everybody needs to say it in a meeting and give the.
How many I apologize for not asking her to step forward for that.
I didn't pick up much of the audio.
Um, thank you for that, Madam President.
No, jump up to the podium, Emily.
All right.
I figured I was talking about how she could hear.
That's a second, Jack. Commissioner Pele, any other comments?
No other comments.
Commissioner Mo.
So many. I don't think the entire council was struck out on the permit idea. It was one of the ideas, several council members were really pushing that. I don't care if it's special land use permit or what we do. I would love to have a specialty and include the DDA in the council. I don't think we're ready for that.
No.
I would like to say, this is what the planning commission's come up with, what do you think, rather than?
That's our process.
There's too many of us to sit there and.
That's our process. Yeah, I think we'll only muddy the waters by bringing too many people involved here. Our, our job is to deliberate and come up with a recommendation and hand it to the council. The council can do with that recommendation as they see fit. They can send it back to us, they can send it to DDA for comment, or, or whatever that may be, or they can act upon it. It's certainly their choice, but our mission is to come up with a set of recommendations through motion that we can give to the council as our majority recommendation of how we should proceed to go forward.
Mario, do you know of any other communities that would do this by special land use that have the criteria that they use, that would do this by permit?
Yes.
Could you get some of those samples? I love you.
Thank you, Mario. Madam, any comments?
Just one comment, and this might just be beating dead horse here. Just want to make sure that identification of, you know, storage, display, and sales are clearly defined if we do pursue allowing external usage here. It can't be any, storage is a lot different than a display and sale, so.
Those have to be well-defined as well.
That's what, exactly, that's what I'm saying, because I don't want to.
There can't be any ambiguity.
And that's where the residential issue is getting concerned, is if you've got storage everywhere, that's different than, I think, sales.
I agree, thank you. Mr. E.
I agree with Adam, and some of Mo's suggestions, and of course what Jack said, it needs to be checked and out and decided here and then presented, instead of going through bodies and trying to, it should be so long, I'll never have you down.
I agree. Drew, any other comments?
The, the only thing I would say is that I think a solid way to proceed may be a motion that recommends the village planner to draft, an initial draft with whatever the criteria are that you're looking for, for this topic, that, that information could, that motion and that information that's compiled, the decision draft can be shared with village council and say, hey, this is what the planning commission, the direction they're going, it can be shared with the DDA board, this is, hey, DDA, this is the direction the planning commission's looking, and then we can get that feedback hopefully prior to your October 16th meeting, so that you'll be able to at least say, hey, based on our initial motion and recommendation, if, if you're ready to do, you know, a broad motion, you can get that feedback from them, and then incorporate that when you're doing this next review, which also may help speed up this timeline a little bit, but I do agree that with the public hearing, those requirements for, we get to that point and all that, 60 to 90 days is possible, but that's, it'll probably be in that range.
Thank you for that lovely segue. That was very well done. My compatriot right next to me is waving a piece of paper in my face, and that means he has a motion or a sort of a judgment.
I've captured a lot of things, and number one, you have businesses that are non-conforming right now. The village council has voted a moratorium to stop ticketing, to stop this. Do you, does village council have all the businesses identified? I would want one to come in tomorrow or night.
We did the whole district, the entire C1 transitional district, but the motion included, it was only existing stores. Someone came in tomorrow, and dumped some.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
That's the point of the moratorium.
Okay. Our job is to place an ordinance in recommendation form to the village council.
That's correct.
You need four public hearings, two, one here, two here, and then two at village council, or one.
One public hearing.
One here, and then they are read at the village council. So it's only one public hearing.
Yeah.
All right, let's see if this'll work. I'll make a motion to recommend to the village council continuation of the moratorium for the existing non-conformance businesses, the ones in violation of C1 transitional outdoor sales, while an initial ordinance draft to address this situation will be presented within the next 90 days.
That's what I was looking for, one second. All right, any other comment?
Can I read that?
You can walk in.
Well, they can read mine.
You try. Because I put a couple words in there. What then is, is a motion though?
No, it's all right, you can have further discussion during the voting.
What the motion's trying to do is keep moratorium out there so we don't ticket the people that are already existing. What we need to do is to go through and ordinance something to, so that everybody is conforming, you have to get that ordinance out there. Working with the DDA, the village council, we can come up with some ideas based on this ordinance, with Mario, write it up and put it together, and have it come within 90 days.
Do you want to include that in the motion though? Because I instructed our planner.
Well, he's, he's the one that led the ordinance.
I understand, but you didn't instruct him to do so here.
Well, you could do a second motion too.
Okay. We'll do that.
I was saying, again, we got a motion. So, Mr. Secretary, we have a motion on the table, and I have a second. Let's do roll call vote on that, because I like doing those. Okay. Johnson?
Yes.
Dee?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Bama?
Yes.
Elmo?
Yes.
Eli?
Yes.
Good, all right, thank you very much, appreciate that, Mr. Secretary.
So what we're gonna do now.
Are you gonna make a motion?
Are you gonna instruct him, or do you need a motion to instruct him?
Mario, you know what you gotta do?
Well, I think.
Get it out.
Believe it or not. And Mario, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we necessarily need a motion to.
No, you can just.
I think you have, you have a sense of what it is we're trying to deal with. And, and in particular, I think that we are speaking just in regard to the C1 transition zoning district, unless I'm mistaken.
That's what I.
And so here's, here's my expectation, Mario. We are not looking for complete rewrite of the entire outdoor storage slash display ordinance. We just want to look particularly at C1 transition. And I, I think that, unless I'm mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, we're looking at some mechanism to create an ability for a business to conduct outdoor sales and/or outdoor display within their property boundaries. Now, I think that that's going to include a set of potential restrictions. They don't, I don't believe they all have to be defined right now, but I think that in a broad sense, we should try to hit the primary topics. I'm waiting a second. So that we've got a pretty rough outline of what it is we're trying to accomplish, because I hope that you've gotten a sense of sort of where we're leaning. And if you could bring that to us, I think that we'd probably be prepared to take action on it. Jack, please.
You should instruct Mario to do the flavor of the people talking about a special permit versus a special land use.
Yes. And in addition, because again, I'm still focused in on this, I, I really, one of the questions I wanted to ask you, and I think we talked about it a little bit, and I might even ask you, but perhaps two options here. A permit mechanism, which is administrative, as Mr. Schneider said, originating with us and then being perpetuated through the administrative offices down the hall, or a special land use permit that's attached to an entity as opposed to the land, restricted to ensure that it is not in perpetuity. And so if anything changes around those circumstances, that permit dies. And I'd like to know which of those two mechanisms is one both legal and the most efficacious? And here's part of my, here's, I'm continuing to think about this morning, I want to make sure, absolutely sure, that when we go through this process, and what I'm talking about is a business owner comes in the door and says, I want to have outdoor sales and/or storage, that we have a mechanism in place that allows the community to come to us and state their case, because that's very, very important to me. I heard what Mo said earlier, and that she's, Mo, can I put words in your mouth?
Sure.
I sense that she's fairly in favor of this, but she wants to make sure that the community is not impacted in a negative way by this. And so if, if a community member believes that they are negatively impacted, I want to have the opportunity to be able to hear about it at the very least. All right? And so having a mechanism in place that allows us to go through that process, it may or may not be through a public hearing or whatever, whatever the mechanism that we have to do, I want to make sure that that's preserved. And so I, for myself, as chair, that's very important to me. I would expect it. My commissioners feel hopefully likewise, but those are the sort of things that I would like you to consider as you're working on this, and please don't hesitate to consult me or any of the other members as you work through this if you have questions, because I would like you to come back to us on our next meeting and have something as thoroughly thought out as, as possible.
Well, I will just say that I do think it's going to be possible to do it as a special land use, and actually I would recommend that, so that the initial review does come before you, and I do think we can, from that point on, move to a permit process that allows them to renew a permit. So procedurally, I think that could work. When it comes to existing language, I do think there are some places where the language needs to be, existing language needs to be cleared up. Like, for example, technically, the, the definition, the ordinance is for open-air business, and then your review criteria listed as open-air business, but technically, in the view chart of your zoning, of your zoning ordinance, it doesn't actually list open-air business, it says outdoor displays. So those kind of little, you know, not typos, but general things, just those things are clear up. So I think things will clear up, definitely have the process that you want, and then I think, and I won't get into this, but I think one thing that I'm starting to wrestle with in my, my head is getting back to the permanent versus temporary nature of uses. When, when Mo and you guys started talking about, you know, is it covered, or is it, how is it maintained? Well, maintain, maintain will definitely be something that's gonna be easy to put in, but the permanent nature of, you know, lighting, like, you know, it requires specific lighting, you know, the idea that a temporary use, that might just want to place them for a lit, for a small year to time, the area could occupy existing parking spaces. I would not feel comfortable with allowing for a temporary use added item occupying required parking spaces, because then they're, then it's a perpetual situation of parking spaces being restricted. But those are some of the things that I'll work on and share, and, but I do think majority of everything we discussed tonight can be addressed to your satisfaction, and then you just can bring up a bunch of other points.
All right, I appreciate all of that, Mario. Are there liability concerns here for the property owners?
No, because, you know, as with any proposal, they, they, someone has an idea, they want to do X. They come to the village, and then the village looks at the ordinance and says, all right, you've been under this criteria, this is how you're gonna do your review. If they come under a criteria and it's not in the ordinance, then it's more like, we're sorry, you can't operate a, use your power plant to the village, or whatever the case may be.
Sure.
But from a liability standpoint, you know, it's a matter, I don't really see that from a procedural standpoint, allowing a permit to be renewed, or specifically outlining criteria. Definitely, the special use criteria, that's, that's bringing your wheel out, so that's state, state statute indicates specifically the planning commission to review special use criteria, and the most broadest definition is for the whole, for it to, to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the village.
My preference is to be broad rather than.
Yes.
Specific.
And I would.
And Mr. Schneider, please, at the podium, and briefly, please, because we're already running late, and I don't want to hold my.
Chuck Snyder, 2681, Heather Robb here. See, in your directions to Mario, you mentioned the words outdoor sales and storage. I don't think anybody's advocating outdoor storage. That's a whole different thing. I mean, outdoor sales means you got a price tag on that, and that's being sold. I don't, I don't think storage is an issue we're, we're not looking, no one wants storage.
All right, thank you for that. Mario, I said storage because I've heard the term storage bandied about. If I am incorrect in that, please take that into consideration. Fortunately, I've never been able to walk on water, and nothing I say is akin to gospel, so, you know, if I, if I ever mistake, mistake something.
Right next to Jesus.
Right, that's right. So please take my words into consideration, and commissioners, will you support my instructions to the, to our planner? Everybody's kind of pretty much unpatient with that, but I appreciate that, thank you. All right, so unless there's anything else on this topic, I'd like to move on. Like I said, we're already running late. Do we want to get into the discussion regarding the action plan, or do we want to table that for the next meeting?
I would say that at least give Glenn the opportunity to just talk about the few recommendations from the DDA board, just something for you all to, or not from, or from his perspective as the DDA director, based on projects they're working on, and then, you know, perhaps just table the, or set aside the topic for the next meeting, and we can perhaps incorporate any aspects of, from what Glenn talks about, that may be of value to you. We had Glenn stay late tonight to come talk, you also like to give him that opportunity.
Mr. President, are you prepared to make a presentation? I'm sorry?
He's just some kid. Don't pay attention, he's going away.
Mr. President, are you prepared to make a presentation to us tonight?
Yes, I can cover some of that talk.
Hey, I'd love to hear your comment. At least take it.
That hurts.
That's right.
Yeah, I know, we're missing the voice. DDR.
Hold who for reasons? Good evening, Glenn Pitt, Central Director, Oxford DDA. I just wanted to provide you some information on what the DDA is working on that would overlap with what the planning commission might be working on. There's an attached memo, I'll touch on a few points here. One of the things that we're looking at within the DDA is making downtown more bicycle accessible. The transportation plan addresses the bicycle mobility analysis. We're looking at increasing bike parking in downtown as a means of alleviating some of the demand for vehicle parking. Most of the village lies within a 10-minute bike shed in downtown, so it is an alternative, it's a viable alternative for people to come to downtown and enjoy.
it's a viable alternative for people to come to downtown and enjoy it during the next seven months. Where the DDA does not have the jurisdiction, there's these little bike routes outside of the DDA boundaries that are identified in the future transportation plan. So those bike routes and signage that could be put in place relatively inexpensively to facilitate that would be appreciated if the planning commission would move forward and directly with the village committee to implement that. We're working on a parking plan, address the issues in downtown. Currently, our parking is regulated into fifteen-minute, one-hour, and unlimited. This results in some issues with regards to employees parking close to the retail destinations. The newest parking studies done, we're looking at developing some strategies and talking with the business owners in downtown about time pricing parking so that it's restricted into two-hour or eight-hour parking during the day in order to facilitate return of parking spaces adjacent to the retails and restaurants. So again, it's something we're working on, it would be a general ordinance recommendation to the village council, but we'd like to take it in front of the planning commission as a courtesy, you know, but we'd love your input on it as well.
Thank you.
We're doing a comprehensive wayfinding system as part of the streetscape design. One of the things that we're looking at from the planning commission perspective is would they be interested in implementing that branding and identity and wayfinding throughout the village? It's something that our design committee has worked on, we've got a template that we're looking at, and once we get it finalized with some drafts, we'd love to share it with the planning commission and say, "Can we implement this gateway signage in the community that'll wayfind the signs to community assets?" So it's relatively straightforward at that point, once we get to that point. But it's something we have to develop for the streetscape project as part of the grant requirements, some tab grant. One of the things that we're maybe on, and we're gonna ramp up our effort on in partnership with One Stop Oakland County, is marketing some of our redevelopment properties that we had in the village. There are some things that we're looking at in terms of doing some profile of properties that match up with the redevelopment plans that were adopted in 2016. We'd like to see some renderings, some performance, and make these parcels redeveloped ready so that if a developer has an interest in developing more than Oakland County, we can say, "This is what we've got, this is our preferred alternative, and this is gonna get you through the approval process which quicker." We've already done the late work on some of these things, showing you the rate of return for this stuff and the best. Well, the DDA would like, from the planning commission, is prioritization sites, looking at which of the sites that you would like to tack first out of all of the various sites that we have within the village. And so again, that would be just something to become more redevelopment ready, and because of those sites, we can then work with Oakland County to market those sites and do some of that in partnership with Mario, and just start doing some of the renderings, working on the profiles. We'll get into designing and see when transitional, historic, we are in the process, we are being nominated to be placed on the national historic places for the core downtown. This is not done with the intent of creating a historic district commission and additional layer of regulation. The intent is just to create an economic development incentive and a placemaking incentive so that we have additional tax credits for those who wish to do rehabilitation within that district. That's a profound issue and another thought.
Yes.
I'm, okay, I'd like to, I'm not sure if not right now, but I would like very much to talk more about that.
We can dive into that, or we can bring out our consulting team to talk about the whole process.
Yeah, I'd like to, if I understood what you're gonna say, I'd love to, I'd certainly like to hear more about that. In conjunction with that, the DDA has a sign and grant incentive program, and we're in the process of looking at developing design guidelines for the core downtown, so that when we do have a technical come in, we have some guidelines for them to follow in order to obtain the grant monies from us. So we're gonna be creating those design guidelines within the next three or four months, so that we actually have a set of standards. Right now, it's just completely discretionary within the DDA design committee, people would like to have some formal design guidelines to guide that based on the ability to character of the core downtown. Eventually, maybe have those adopted in the master plans, design guidelines for the character of the downtown for redevelopment. Got some big parcels adjacent to and in the downtown, and those design guidelines could possibly apply as well if they're guidance staff. That's pretty much it, that's the short and sweet version. I like all of that. Moving forward, thank you for the progress and... Glenn, I'd like to offer you my apologies if any of my comments were offensive. I'm not interested in being acting on reflection, I might have been a bit dismissive when I said that the DDA didn't have a voice in, I was speaking strictly from a legalistic standpoint, I was creating ordinance or anything, I was asking, no way that's...
No, no problem.
...for your organization. Actually, we have staff reviewed those for all site plans that come with the thing the DDA history, you were requesting some comments on site plans, so I appreciate that as well.
You mentioned the historic district process is in motion, can you clarify when you expect that to be finalized and when the consultants might be available to come and present?
The submission, the final submission went into, shook on the feds last month. We're expecting a resolution on that sometime in December or January. That has been, what our timeline has been set up for. Our intent is to hope that it comes later rather than sooner, because celebrating a historic district in the middle of January does not sound like anybody's gonna give a good time outside, so we'd like to wait till a longer weather to celebrate that. But I can talk with our consultants, with Commonwealth consultants, they've been up here several times, and I think Elaine would be happy to come up and talk about that process.
And to piggyback on your comment about there's a lot of complexities to this process, a lot to understand, I'd like to recommend that we plan on bringing those consultants in for a complete presentation fairly soon. So I don't know if the rest of the commission feels that way about it, but if it is to be integrated into planning, our forward planning and our prioritization, I think we need to understand what's going on with that.
I'm sorry, I have to confer, I'm definitely interested, I'd like to, I mean, this is the first I've heard about this, and frankly, I'm kinda surprised that this is already in such an advanced state of process without...
If I might, sorry, Mr. Chair, if I might, just reiterate a point of clarification. What the DDA, Eric Meaven, has gone through is filing for, through the Parks, through the Federal Parks Department, a registration on the National Register of Historic Places for the downtown. So what this is, it's basically a register, it's a listing of all the various historic places and within country that contribute to historic nature and character of the area. And it's merely a designation from the Parks Department, and it opens up property owners if they choose, if the property owner chooses to apply for and receive a certain level of federal grants for historic restoration of the property. It doesn't involve any kind of regulations at the local level with regards to that, it doesn't involve any incentives or any regulation. That, if there was ever a historic district created, that's something that's created at the local levels, there would be, the village would undertake creating a historic district commission, and then rules would be written to generally govern the facade of structure. So that's two, very two big distinctions.
All right, good. That should be more careful with my language. Well, yeah, registered district. It matters, because I wanted to make sure we weren't getting ourselves into something that we would later regret. And I would expect that on the more restrictive local level, that greater inclusion would have been initiated to bring all of interested partners together to, you know, formulate a strategy in terms of how we proceed through this, and really, is this a good idea?
Now, this process was started in 2016.
And it's very interesting, because they go through, they have historic, local historians contribute, they have consultants come in, they evaluate each of those structures to contribute, to evaluate how they contribute to the historic nature of the village. And once again, in the end, it's just that, it's a recognition, that at a federal level, we are recognized as being a historic place.
Okay. Good, thank you, I appreciate that clarification.
I'm interested in that because I'm not aware of a district-wide way that properties are registered, usually that's on an individual basis. So I'm curious about that, but also if the streetscape planning is impacted by this registration, and it sounds like it may be, I think we definitely need to understand how that works.
Well, the streetscape issues with the State Historic Preservation Office are because we have historic assets that could be eligible for being on the registry. Whether we had applied for it or not, it was not going to make a difference, because we have those historic assets as they do further in review.
Again, part of the complexity of all these different interacting bodies, I think, needs to be something that we all understand as well as possible, so if we can have that come up on our agenda in a fairly timely manner, I think that would be the rise.
The chairman had to excuse himself. Anything else going on for the annual action plan with the DDA? Sue?
Well, I was just gonna add on to...
Kid, you've got ten issues left.
On to Glenn's thing, it's not district-wide, it's only core downtown. So it's just the four blocks, because we have so many historic buildings there, so there's no restrictions, it's just merely, when somebody looks at Oxford, Michigan, it will say, "We have a historic designation," meaning that we have several historic buildings in the downtown. There's no restrictions, nobody's gonna tell you what to do with your building, what color it can have, anything, it's just merely a feather in our cap, I guess. You lift this up, it'll say that.
Okay, moving on, new business, we have none. Public comment, item's not on the agenda, seeing none, consultant...
Be?
I'm sorry.
Um...
We were just...
We're taking one of the DDA.
Okay.
Okay, I got a mal, watch out. Consultant comments?
Nothing more at this time.
Administration comments from...
I, for once, I will keep it short.
You skipped C, so you're not presenting.
Oh, is that what you meant? Yeah, this is, my letter said, this will be my last planned meeting with you all.
What?
I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to work with you all. We've gotten a lot done in the last year and a half, both, you know, administratively with the village, but on the planning commission, on the DDA board and village council, I really am proud of the time I've had here. I wouldn't mind if it was a little longer, but things come up. So, thank you all, and I'll continue to be a supporter of you all going forward, and if there's ever anything that I can do to help, even after my time has gone here, I will do everything I can to do so.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Deen?
I thought I had good stuff on tonight, appreciate your guys' comments and the feedback from the public, but the board, and I'd like to wish Drew great success moving forward. You're a good young man, and I hope to bless you.
Thank you, Commissioner Deen. Ms. Leslie?
No additional comments, and take care of yourself.
Commissioner Mo?
I'm just surprised you helped came to the meeting after I called all you over the weekend. I knew you didn't have me, you wouldn't show. I was only...
Is that all?
That's it.
Okay, I was waiting for this next shoe to drop. Commissioner Rose?
Just best wishes to you, you adventure life.
Jack? Last time I told you we did preliminary site plan approval, we just finished final site plan approval, and work has begun on the Premier Grace Center, where it used to be the New Beginnings Church. It's shared between Orion Township and Oxford Township. We have an inner local agreement between the two townships as to who's inspecting, who's getting paid, who's doing what, so all that was worked out for the buildings and is moving ahead. I've also been put on the 2020 Census Committee to find all the information out and pass it out through the community, I don't know, village council or the planning commission, is anybody charged with that here locally? But I can't give you her name, we had, it was a core topic in our last trustee meeting. I'll find it for you as soon as it's on my face.
Drew, have you been in there?
Yes, I can speak to our involvement.
Okay, so you're gonna have somebody in your place?
Well, we, the village decided to hand off basically all of our work with the census to the county, so they do, they're doing most of the work for us. We have the opportunity to provide feedback on the work that they put together. The, our major review period already passed, so the next time we will have the opportunity to really have involvement with that, I believe is in early to mid-2019. That's where our representatives from Oakland County told us. We have, we were told about, you know, the work that you all are doing, Dr. Joe, Mr. Dunn, and so we doubled back with our representatives from the county, and that's what they told us, so...
Okay. Well, that, and I said my goodbyes earlier, so there'll be no tears shed tonight.
Thank you.
Joe?
I do not envy you, my friend. You have very, very big shoes to fill. I don't know what you're gonna do, but unfortunately, the bar is set very high, and your young man here has really created the space for himself here, both on this commission and in the heart and mind of its chair, which I am very grateful for, I've already stressed my deep respect and admiration for you, so like Jack, I'm not gonna go any farther, because I think we've already covered most of that ground, but Drew, you know what I think, buddy? You're the best. I thank you very much for your friendship and for all of our work and dedication, and I wish you all the very best, and as always, if there's anything ever I can do, please don't mistake that, it's a pleasure to work with you, I mean that, always sincere.
Really good. Make a vote into a Jared Day second.
All right, I think that, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or if you'll say nay-nay, good.